Please be seated.
Welcome to the meeting of the Borough Council. This meeting has been recorded and live streamed. And welcome to those members of the public in the gallery, in the public gallery and those watching from home. If any member of the public or press would like to record proceedings themselves, please do so from the public gallery, without interfering in today's business. If the fire alarm sounds, can those sitting in the public gallery exit through those doors there? And make your way to the front of the town hall and colleagues in the chamber through these two doors? And we will meet at the front of the town hall also. Any member wishing to speak, please use your microphone. And this is an important sentence, and I'm going to read it out. Full council today will deal only with the business that is set out in the summons. And I have received apologies from councillors Dixon, Potts, Donaldson, Year, Ford, Guy, Lisk and McHugh. Are there any other apologies, please? Okay. Yes, councillor Tira.
Councillor Dawes, please.
Councillor Dawes, thank you. The first item of business is declaration of interests. Does any member wish to make a declaration before we move on to the next item of business? Councillor Walsh.
I'd like to make a non pecuniary on item ten as vice chair of the safeguarding for needs and children.
Councillor Clare.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a personal declaration of interest as a registered supporter of Israel and also exchanging correspondence between myself and the Towns MP earlier on in the conflict. And also as a person that receives regular updates on the conflict itself.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I would like to declare an interest as the Chair of Adult and Children's Safeguard and item ten on the agenda. Thank you.
Great. Yes, thank you. Can I just remind colleagues that if you have a disclosable pecuniary interest in any item, that'll prevent you from participating in the debate and any vote. So you'll need to leave the chamber if you have a disclosable pecuniary interest. The next item of business is the business of the meeting of the council held on the 30th of November, 30th of November, St Andrews Day. Are they accepted as a correct record?
Will I speak, please?
Two seconds, councillor. Are they accepted as a correct record? I didn't hear that. Great, thank you. Okay, councillor Robertson.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. On page twenty-one of the minutes, councillor Dawes, who was obviously not present tonight, where I had asked a question about his report, where he stated in his report, no children came to any harm. Councillor Dawes has responded and it's recorded in the minutes. And he states, I quote, "There were and are no concerns for children's safety and there was nothing reported on by Ofsted in any way criminal or merited sharing with the police." So he's quoting from the Ofsted report. That's not correct and these minutes aren't correct because that sentence is not in the Ofsted report. I've read it twenty times. So these minutes need amended or a response needs provided where he got this quote from. This is the Ofsted report and he says, "I quote," so they're not correct, Mister Mayor.
Okay, you know, the minutes are not verbatim. I take cognizance of what you've said, but as far as I'm concerned, the minutes have been agreed and that's it.
Well, I've said that incorrect. Can I have that recorded in the minutes, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, yep. It's just been explained to me by the solicitor that there's an annex to the minutes, the questions. Okay, right, I think, yeah, certainly, certainly. Right, the minutes have been agreed. Just before we go into, in fact, I'll do it now. The mayor's announcements and communications, I've got no pressing announcements to make today apart from the following. This is just for colleagues who are attending the meeting today. There's some points I wish to make and I want to make them specifically now. Because I am not going to tolerate any misbehaviour in this chamber. So this is straight from the book that everybody has, which is the Constitution. And I'm here to uphold the Constitution. So when a councillor speaks at full council today, they must stand up and address the meeting through the mayor. Unless the mayor has agreed otherwise with an elected member for reasons that need not be shared with the meeting. If more than one councillor stands, the mayor will ask one to speak and the others must sit. When the mayor stands during a debate at full council, any councillor speaking at that time must stop immediately and sit down. The meeting must be silent. Conduct of councillors, any councillor speaking at any meeting will not accuse anyone, a member, an officer or otherwise, of improper motives or use offensive expressions or unparliamentary language and must demonstrate compliance with the council's proud values at all times as they are embedded into the heart of our council. At any meeting, if the mayor feels that any councillor misconducts themselves by persistently disregarding the ruling of the mayor, behaving irregularly, improperly or offensively or against any of the specific proud values or purposely obstructs council business or repeats themselves or uses offensive language, the mayor can move that the councillor named not be further heard. There are further implications, but I'm not going into it. I hope that everybody understands where I'm coming from when I'm chairing this meeting. Thank you. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs on the Employer Defence Recognition Scheme and update on Armed Forces. I will ask councillor Paul Dean as lead member for voluntary sector partnerships and equalities to remove the report. Councillor Dean.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I would like to give a warm welcome to our distinguished guests in the gallery today from the Armed Forces Forum and the NAFI break. I present this report to the chamber in my capacity as cabinet portfolio holder and Armed Forces champion. This report is to update Borough Council on the activity the council has undertaken to support the Armed Forces community in South Tyneside. This evening's report follows a similar report presented to Borough Council in November two thousand and twenty-two and brings activity up to date. During two thousand and twenty-three, the council, with the support of the Armed Forces Forum, has worked closely with the Ministry of Defence to seek revalidation of their employer recognition scheme. South Tyneside Council was one of the first local authorities to collaborate with the Ministry of Defence in this scheme and has been a gold award holder for five years. As mentioned in the mayor's announcement at Borough Council on the nineteenth of October two thousand and twenty-three, South Tyneside has been revalidated as a gold award holder. This status, this status will be valid for five years. This revalidation builds on some excellent practice already in place and to which many members are aware of due to last year's update. However, I wish to draw members' attention specifically to some new activities we had put in place over the last year, including a brand new employee network which was launched in the Town Hall Cafe on thirteenth of December two thousand and twenty-three. The network is to support any employee who is a veteran of the Armed Forces or any reservist who could be called upon for active duty. The network also extends to non-military employees who have close family members who are on active duty and which may impact on their work-life balance. This could include childcare to other caring responsibilities and more. We also want to support the employees who wish to volunteer with uniformed services, such as those volunteering with the cadet movement. The volunteers provide our young people with positive activity, mentorship and help them develop leadership and life skills. We already have positive practice in place for employees such as a reservist policy with paid leave for training and active duty, a volunteer policy supporting the employees with voluntary time commitments and flexible working arrangements. However, we want to hear directly from our employees about what else we could do to ensure we are supporting these employees who are within the Armed Forces community. They know best about the unique challenges or opportunities they have. We also have in place positive recruitment practice for veterans who may be seeking employment with South Tyneside Council. We have strengthened that by registering council vacancies on the Forces Families Jobs website. We have strengthened our partnership governance by extending an invitation to an Armed Forces representative to participate in our partnership work programme. This means that when we are considering shared challenges such as cost of living, we have an opportunity for partners to hear directly about the specific issues facing those in the Armed Forces community. We are collectively proud and respectful of those who have served in the Armed Forces. As such, a council motion was passed on thirtieth of November two thousand and twenty-three to review the treatment of military compensation payments when assessing eligibility for disabled facilities grants. We continue to remember those who have served, including those who have made the ultimate sacrifice through events such as the Borough Way Remembrance Services as well as well-attended Armed Forces Day held in the summer. We have a solid platform to build upon and we are always looking at ways to strengthen our work in this area. The council has a dedicated webpage of resources as well as a dedicated support officer.
Councillor Dean, three minutes. Thank you, councillor Dean. I think it's important to recognise the hard work that's went into this before that as well. I'd like to thank councillor Malcolm for his, and let him be recognised for some of the hard work that he did in preparing the groundwork here for that. And also, I hope he doesn't mind me saying this, although he's retired, ex-council officer Paul Baldassera, who worked extremely hard and well with councillor Malcolm. And, you know, I'm proud as an individual, but proud as the mayor of South Tyneside to be recognised by, you know, this gold award. And I think it's something that's borne fruit from somebody's hard work. And the thought behind it is amazing because we do, you know, recognise the Armed Forces and we have a longstanding association with the Armed Forces and long may that continue. So thank you for that, councillor Dean. The long agenda tonight. Okay, the next item is item five to consider a report of the Director of Business and Resources. Ah, sorry, I've been, how remiss of me. Was councillor Dean's motion seconded?
I'd like to second that, Mister Mayor.
If you wish to. Yep. Yep. See you again. Yeah, does any member wish to speak to the report? Ask questions? Okay, councillor Robertson first, then councillor Francis. Anybody else? Councillor Robertson.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. You said questions before councillor Dean's. I will now ask you a question. Do you speak to employees that are ex-forces? Do you go around speaking to them or just?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. And it's section five point two of the papers here. It says, "As part of the council's approach as a gold standard employer, it has developed a positive employment policy as well as embedding awareness through human resources, organisation, development and practices." Are you aware that five of our striking bin men are ex-forces? Are you aware? And do you think they're being treated fairly then? They're on strike for bullying.
Okay. Excuse me.
But you can't have a certificate or something, you're not doing.
Let's remember what I said at the beginning. We're not going to have any cross-talk. Could you sit down, please, councillor Robertson? That issue is not going to be raised or discussed in this chamber tonight. It's not in the business. Councillor Francis.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I was just wanting to quickly recognise the important work that's been done. I know you've made reference to it now as well by previous staff and current staff of the council, but also important work done by the voluntary sector as well. And place on record a note of thanks to them. And obviously that important work is done for its own sake and the gold award is simply, you know, recognition of that. But I would also like to thank councillor Dean for his ongoing work since he's kind of taken on this member champion role and commend the work done since the last report on this to full council.
Is anybody else wish to speak, ask questions? Okay. Councillor Brennan.
Just a question. Thank you for your report councillor Dean. And I would like to congratulate you on the progress with veterans. But there's a nationwide shortage in recruitment for the Armed Forces. And as a North East who's proud of our heritage in basically supplying the Armed Forces with recruitment, recruits, what we're doing for recruitment in the area to help the Armed Forces get new recruits in. Thank you.
As an authority, we've set something up where we've, you know, we have got officers who are, and we are now engaged. We have an engagement officer who deals with recruitment. So yes, it is an ongoing thing and it's something which we're really looking forward to kind of working with with the people like NAFI break and with the officer who works for South Tyneside Homes, Lee Moore, who I can't praise enough. Lee is such, is an exceptional officer. And what we are doing, we are, one thing else which is currently on our new agenda is we've got a firm, it's a well-known building firm of barits who, we're in close relationship with them. And what they're doing is, we've had a recent meeting with them and they've got a recruitment programme in place which we're going to work with them and ways in which we can kind of encourage to get ex-Armed Forces people into the community and in well-paid jobs.
Okay, can we note the progress made since the last update of Borough Council, colleagues? Next item is to consider a report of the Director of Business and Resources on the Treasury Management Midyear Review. I will ask councillor Bell as lead member of Governance, Finance and Corporate Services to move the report. Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The Chartered Institute of Public Finance and Accountancy Code of Practice on Treasury Management requires cabinet and council to receive a mid-year report on treasury management. This report covers the period from the first of April two thousand and twenty-three to the thirtieth of September two thousand and twenty-three. The key concern with the economy at the moment, as it has been for quite some time now, is that inflation remains significantly above the Bank of England target. In this environment, interest rates continue to be elevated to a high level. Inflation has started to fall and is expected to return to the two percent target by the end of two thousand and twenty-five, if not sooner. During this period, no loans were taken from the Public Works Loan Board. Two loans totaling ten million pound matured and were both repaid. A short-term loan of six million pound was also repaid. The report notes that the council is acting within the treasury and prudential limits as set out in the treasury strategy and councillors recommended to note this report. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Barney. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. And thank you for the report councillor Bell. You may have an idea what I'm going to talk about. Before I start, I look forward to your clarifying at least one point in relation to our council's debt level and what is presented in the wording of your report. You've started and stated in the report today that our council's current debt level is six hundred and eighteen point five million. Can you clarify if this debt level of six hundred and eighteen point five million includes seventy-seven point seven million PFI liability that this council has? This remembering that the word debt is defined as a sum of money that is owed or due. In more general terms, but still related to our debt level, I see we figure in a recently announced league table councils with the largest debt per resident league. Sadly, nothing to celebrate, but it should be an alarm bell to every resident in our borough. We from a field of three hundred and seventeen managed to get into the top ten unfortunately. And the report also detailed us having a debt level of around five times our spending level. Frightening. I've said it before, I'll say it again, this debt level we are burdened with was mostly accumulated under a Labour government and fully by this Labour group. Just to pre empt the usual, it's all the fault of the Tories line from the Labour group. Overall, I think we need to be more open and honest in how we here in South Tyneside present our financial position. God knows how many generations it will take to repair this debt. But a start would be with the Labour group being more open and detailed to our residents on the position we are currently in. You don't have SIPFA warning you about high levels of debt worryingly appearing in the top ten of the largest debt per resident league, paying over twenty-two million every year in debt repayments to the detriment of our council's services. And then the BBC challenging you on TV about spending too much. That doesn't warrant a position to simply say, as the Labour group recently has, that the concerns raised are just scaremongering. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Councillor Milburn.
Sorry, thanks, Mister Mayor. Yeah, it was just for clarity, councillor Bell. Same issue as, or a similar issue to councillor Thompson. Just for clarity and for the public, this seventy-seven point seven that we've got against PFI liabilities, is that totaled in with the external debt or not?
Quite a bit, I'm from councillor Thompson. I do believe that the PFI figures are included in that because that is the total debt. And I think what we've got to remember is that that figure also includes our And I think what we've got to remember is that that figure also includes our housing stock. So for over 40% of that figure relates to our housing stock. Now, you're not comparing apples with apples. If you're taking into consideration the likes of Sunderland Authority, who don't own their housing, so don't have housing figures in their debt. Because they are in ours. Obviously, the league table does show that we are high. However, without that, are we now saying that this council needs to move backwards and not forwards? We wouldn't have the infrastructure that we have now, the updates to Lindisfarne Roundabout, we wouldn't have the word, we wouldn't have the leisure facilities or the libraries that are still being run at the moment without that money helping us to do that. And yes, we can move backwards if that is what you want. But that is not what this council is about. It's about moving forward and always has been. And I do appreciate what councillor Thompson said about the BBC report. He was actually quoted on there as well, so it wasn't just from our side of the house. Thank you, Chair. Sorry, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for the report, councillor. First of all, all of this complex information that you're putting in here, or you're not putting in here, councillor Bell, but the officers has given you the information. There's still a lot of the SIPF action plan that hasn't been met yet. We certainly haven't been informed of it. So first of all, where we're at with that, when we're getting big explanations like this and lots of figures. And obviously, yourself, you can only go on what the officers is telling you. And I know you give a lot of time to the rule. But we do need to know where the SIPF report is because it's touching two year now. We've just seen on the news this week that Middlesbrough Council have asked the government for a bailout. So on camera now, without putting you on the spot, because you can only take it off the officers, can I ask, how near are we to asking the government for a bailout? And how near are we to bankruptcy? Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you councillor Robertson. Obviously, the SIPF review that we did was instigated by the council. It wasn't by SIPF. We came in and asked them to look at our finances and our resources and what was happening. That plan does go back through the audit committee and has done regularly. The plan was an 12 to 18 month plan and we're coming up to that. And I believe there's only a couple of items left on that plan and they are on target and they are running towards the end of the 18 months. And that will go back to the audit committee. So there isn't any further things to be done under the SIPF review and the plan that came through. There are only the two. And I can assure you that at the moment, we are not anywhere near bankruptcy and never will be because we are an asset-rich borough. We're certainly not. And there's certainly no red flags or anything being taken up with SIPF or anyone else. Because like I said, we are actually prudently borrowing within the realms of the treasury strategy and we have not strayed from that, nor will we in the near future, Chair. Sorry, Mr. Thank you, Sir Mayor. I mean, obviously, that is something that will come through the audit committee. And yes, we would welcome them to come back. We did invite them in the first place. Therefore, it's not on their radar and they don't have a return date. But it is within our gift to ask them to come back and look again. And obviously, it's something that we will consider after the two-year period and the plan is embedded into our financial programme. Then yes, that is something that we would consider, councillor.
Thank you councillor Bell. Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you councillor Bell for the report. Just to put this in context, the local government association recently warned that as many as one in five councils could be facing financial difficulties. And of course, it has been in the news this week. South Tyneside Council named as one of the local authorities with highest levels of debt per person. And I do accept councillor Thompson's point about debt accumulated prior to 2010. And of course, money spent servicing debt is money that's not available to be spent on other things. But at the same time, I do take the point about assets as opposed to liabilities and the need to invest in our communities as long as that's done prudently. That said, it's also necessary to recognise that the money coming to South Tyneside Council from central government has been slashed. And I wish we could all see right now the graph that you presented at overview and scrutiny committee in recent weeks that showed just how much money has been taken out of this borough by the Tory government. And what's really needed is properly funded local services. Never mind the Prime Minister promising tax cuts if he wins a general election. How about restoring funding to local authorities? Who are becoming insolvent left, right and centre. Of course, it's worth mentioning that we don't just have debt. We also have reserves and we have some investments too. And I fully understand that in the wider context of local government finance, we need to focus on the security of our investments. But my question is, does South Tyneside Council currently have a specific ethical investment policy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, we do have an ethical policy. And obviously, I can get that sent out to councillor Francis. And I do appreciate what he said. And obviously, we're going through the budget process at the moment. And that will come back to the next council meeting in February. But I can state that in the last 12, 13 years since 2010, this council has had to make savings of over £200 million. It's over 50% of our budget. There's another nine million to be found for this year. And unfortunately, another nine million next year. So 24, 25 and 25, 26 are going to be very, very challenging years for this council. And the government would have us believe that austerity has finished, stopped, ceased. But unfortunately, that is not the reality. And we do have another nine million to find for 24, 25. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you for the report, councillor Bell. Just one thing, councillor Bell, when you're talking about the money and the finances side of it, we seem to be still throwing money away down bottomless pits. I do believe that we've just paid somewhere in the region of £20,000 for an independent person to come in to do some research on the bin lads. And he has been pushed under the carpet. Could you explain whether all that money should be wasted and just hide it away? And just one more thing, councillor Bell, I will say one thing. I wouldn't thank you for your job for one bit. You're up and down there like a yo-yo, right? And to go back, trust us, we're the last person that was sitting there. No, thank you. We'll keep you there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Roberts. I'm afraid I'm not aware of what you're talking with regards to either, you know, consultant, whatever it is. But I will make inquiries, I will find out and I will get back to you on that. And thank you for your comments. And let's assured I will be up and down like a yo-yo tonight as well. Thank you.
Okay. Can we note the report and is it agreed? You? Next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Business and Resources on the Council Tax Reduction Scheme 2024, 2025. And I will ask councillor Bell as lead member of Governance, Finance and Corporate Services to move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report deals with determining the council tax support scheme for the financial year 2024, 25. Council has been asked to approve and adopt the council tax reduction scheme for the period from the 1st of April 24 to the 31st of March 25. The council tax support scheme is a locally funded and determined discount, which reduces the council tax payable by households on lower incomes. It is a statutory requirement that the scheme be reviewed on an annual basis. The local scheme is proposed to change to an income-banded scheme. The local scheme does not apply to claimants of pensionable age who will remain eligible for up to 100% of support towards their council tax liability. The proposed scheme will provide up to 90% support for households on the lowest income. It makes the scheme work better with the universal credit system, will support families, carers and applicants who receive a disability allowance, take away the need for consistent and constant change in awards and make the scheme easier to manage. Customers will be split into one of four groups. Single, couple, family with one child or family with two or more children. The customer's income will then be assessed against five income bands linked to their household group. The customer's net income will be used in the assessment. Some incomes will continue to be disregarded under this scheme. The majority of 10,500 customers will be better off as a result of the changes to the scheme. The local council tax support scheme is reviewed on an annual basis as required by law to ensure continuing affordability. Council is asked to agree and adopt as the council tax reduction scheme for the period from the 1st of April 24 to the 31st of March 2025, as shown in Appendix A for the purpose of section 13A of the Local Government Finance Act 1992 for the council of the Borough of South Tyneside. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. Is that seconded? Thank you. Does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. For the report, councillor Bell. Councillor Bell, can you have a look at page 49, 3.6, please? It says, modelling of the impact of the new scheme indicates that almost 99% of most eligible under the current scheme will be better or no worse off. Temporary support measures will be put in place for anyone who is significantly adversely affected. That's a brilliant paragraph. It's really, really good. And how will that operate and how will it be identified, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Obviously, the staff that are working at the moment will identify those 1% of claimants who will probably be a little bit worse off. But there are plans for contingencies. There are also plans to make sure that we signpost them to our welfare benefit system to make sure they are claiming all that they're entitled to. So the staff are working hard behind the scenes for those 1% of benefits, benefit people who will actually probably be a little bit worse off. But we are doing all that we can to make sure that they are getting all that they are entitled to.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It was actually a very similar point or a similar question I was going to raise. I mean, of course, the document here in the pack is quite dense, is the first thing I would say. You know, we've got 85 pages of very small font with a lot of information in there. And so the first thing I wondered is, is there an intention to make the information available in a more accessible format for residents to understand and comprehend the implications for them? But as we've just heard, you know, whenever there are changes to schemes like this, there are going to be some people who are better off, some people who are worse off. And it's great to hear that 99% of people are going to be either in the same position or slightly better position. But that then does leave the 1%. And so I just wondered if it's possible to get some clarity on that, not necessarily here tonight, but for elected members, so that we are aware of what sorts of people are going to be adversely affected by this and what support is going to be in place for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will get that information to councillor Francis. And obviously, I do appreciate the length of the report and the way it is presented. However, that has to be done by law through the Act because this council has to agree in its entirety. So unfortunately, it has to be done in the way that it is. But there will be prompt cards and other information that will go out to claimants about the scheme. And obviously, to all of those that are on the council tax support scheme at the moment, so that they are aware of the changes. And there will be complete support in place from our staff for all of those, not just those that will benefit, but again, for the 1% that won't. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Colleagues, council has asked to approve the new Banded Council Tax Reduction Scheme and to delegate any subsequent minor changes to the scheme to the Director of Business and Resources in conjunction with the Lead Member for Governance, Finance and Corporate Services. And that's to ensure alignment with the final upgrading of allowances. Is that agreed? Thank you, colleagues. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs on the statutory review of polling districts, places and stations. I will ask councillor Bell as Lead Member for Governance, Finance and Corporate Services to move the report. Councillor Bell, you weren't wrong with your initial statement.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The council is legally required to carry out a review of polling districts, places and stations every five years. The current review needed to be carried out between the 1st of October 23 and the 31st of January 25. It follows on from last year's review, which was undertaken as a result of the changes to voted arrangements, such as voter ID, which was introduced by the Elections Act of 2022. The review has been conducted in accordance with the statutory requirements, which included a consultation with members, MPs, candidates at recent elections and other interested groups or bodies. As part of the constitution and consultation, a set of proposals were drawn up and circulated to all ward members who were given the opportunity to comment. Following the consultation, the resulting options were considered by Constitution Committee and the committee's recommendations are listed in Appendix 4 to the report. The proposals do not change the number of polling stations, which will remain at 80. Following last year's interim review of portable polling stations, there were a small number of issues identified with the new polling places used at the elections in May 2023. The review sought to address those issues and any other issues that were highlighted as a result of the consultation. If accepted, the recommendations of Constitution Committee mean that the number of portable stations used will increase to seven. Larger portable units will be sighted at these locations wherever possible. Council is therefore asked to approve the recommendations of the Constitution Committee relating to the revised arrangements for polling districts, places and stations. And please note that the new parliamentary constituency boundaries and name and agree to the consequential redesignation of polling district codes and authorize the corporate lead, legal and governance to publish the decision in line with the relevant legislation. I move the report to these recommendations as they are set out in full within the report. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. Is that seconded? Councillor Bell, thank you. Members wish to ask any questions or speak to the report? Okay. Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At page 243 of the report or the attached documents, it says, recognise our fantastic workforce. This annual report showcases the excellent work of many of our frontline services, such as refuse collectors, et cetera.
Okay, councillor Robertson, please sit down. Please sit down and listen to the report.
The gun awry?
Yes, sit down. That's, and I've already stated, councillor Robertson, that we're not going to discuss anything unless it's on the agenda in the standing papers tonight. I said that initially when I first started the meeting. Obviously, you may have a problem with your hearing, which I think you need to go and get checked out. If you don't understand what I'm saying, I'll say it again. We're not discussing anything that is not in the papers tonight. Okay? Well, obviously, you haven't because you've come in, you haven't because you're coming on the wrong item. Yes. Yes. Him without sin and I'm cast the first stone. Right, okay. Colleagues, council has asked to agree the recommendations of the Constitution Committee. Agree the changes to the parliamentary constituency boundaries, constituency names and polling district codes. And that's a result of the Boundary Commission for England's Review of Parliamentary Boundaries. And we need to authorize the corporate lead for legal and governance to publish the decision in line with the requirements of the Electoral Administration Act 2006. Is that agreed? Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. The next item of business is to consider a report of the corporate lead for performance and change management on the Annual Report 2023. of the corporate lead for performance and change management on the Annual Report two oh two three. I will ask councillor Huntley, who is definitely the leader of the council, to move the report.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. It's great to be able to kick off our first full council meeting of the new year with our annual report for twenty twenty three. We launched our new twenty year vision and three year strategy in November twenty twenty two. So last year was our first full year of delivering against our ambitions. Looking at the progress outlined in these reports, we've certainly hit the ground running and had a very successful year in many ways. On top of delivering core day services, we've pressed forward to some fantastic projects that are beginning to make a difference to our residents and our places. It's hard to pick out a lot of highlights, but I'm going to try. In pursuit of our ambition for all residents to be financially secure, we have worked with partners to establish a network of over seventy welcoming places, delivered a new fuel poverty strategy and brought together almost one hundred people from thirty eight different organisations for our recent anti-poverty summit. To support residents with health and wellbeing, we've made good progress on our children's services improvement journey, including strengthening our fostering offer and progressing with plans for three new residential children's homes. We are supporting adults to live more independently with our award-winning See and Solve Trusted Assessor Service and plans for three hundred new extra K homes. And we have helped more people to be active and healthy with seven hundred thousand pound investment in Mountain Stadium, events like the Junior Park Run, Fit for Finish Fun Run and work with hundreds of our Better For You champions. To help local people connect with jobs, we've led a wide range of regeneration activity, secure funding and consulting on master plans for future investment and transformation across our town centres. We are moving forward with our next phase of the International Advanced Manufacturing Park. We've helped to improve careers support for young people, worked with over two hundred and thirty businesses throughout South Tyneside's pledge to increase local spend and local recruitment. We have invested in infrastructure improvements like the Coast Road Realignment Scheme and rolled out a gigabyte capable broadband to ensure our residents are better digitally connected. To ensure our people are part of stronger communities, we've already hit some major milestones towards net zero, including going live with two of our renewable energy schemes and achieving an impressive thirty percent reduction in emissions from twenty nineteen. We've also delivered another wonderful year of events and cultural activities and continue to support improvements that make residents feel safer and more content in their homes and neighbourhoods, including upgrading CCTV and maintaining green flag winning parks and green spaces. Finally, our commitment round target and support to make things fairer. Of course, this underpins every one of our ambitions. From our consciously diverse and inclusive summer parade to our work to install more inclusive playparks, co-designed with disabled children and their families, to our efforts to raise awareness of hate crime, to our work to encourage young people and non-binary people to explore careers in science, technology, engineering and maths. We continue to strive to bring everyone on our journey towards South Tyneside being a place where people will live happy, healthy and fulfilled lives. As the later section of the report highlights all of this, together with the important day-to-day work of providing core services and keeping communities safe and supported, has been made possible because of the hard work and dedication of our employees, elected members and a wide range of partners, including our businesses and the voluntary sector. I would like to put on record my thanks to everyone who has contributed to the many excellent examples of public service set out in our annual report. Importantly, the report also focuses on our next phase of the journey and the big things we'll be delivering this year and beyond in pursuit of our five big ambitions. We are ambitious and have a lot to do, but I'm confident we can build on last year's successes and learn from the challenges we overcome together and make twenty twenty four a very positive and successful year. There's a huge amount to be proud of from last year and a lot to be excited about as we move forward into this year. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Huntley. Is that seconded? Councillor Foreman, thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Foreman?
Thanks. Thanks very much, Mr Mayor. And thank you councillor Huntley for that report. I have to agree that it is clear from the annual report that we have achieved an incredible amount in the last twelve months. It really is helpful to have this opportunity to pause and reflect on the last twelve months. It's wonderful to see the progress we are making in moving towards our vision and ambitions. And seeing it all spelled out in this report really makes me proud to be part of it all, but we cannot be complacent. We, of course, still have many challenges, including high and increasing demand for children's and adult services and challenging health and economic outcomes for some of our residents. Many of these challenges are shaped by national and even global factors. For example, central governments' refusal to properly fund and strategically approach the issues in the social care sector continues to be a massive challenge for us here in South Tyneside and indeed for local authorities around the country. This is not a new thing. It was identified by councillor Francis earlier on about the proper funding. This has been ongoing since twenty ten. Thankfully, however, we are in a good position compared to most and are being guided by our very clear long-term vision and strategy. As our annual report shows, we can be confident that as a local authority, we are taking necessary action to drive improvements over the short, medium and long term. As just one example, early help projects like our Family Hubs launched this summer will, over time, help us to ensure that more families get the right advice and are in touch with the right services sooner, meaning fewer people end up falling into crisis and needing social services interventions later down the road. Personally, I would like to thank officers involved in bringing forward this report. It is so valuable that we, as a council, have this opportunity to reflect on the bigger picture, on how the individual decisions we make and services we deliver come together to help us move forward with our ambitions. There's just so much in here to be hugely proud of. Despite the many pressures we face, we are definitely making real positive steps towards South Tyneside being a place to live. Move the proof.
Second that report, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As many of you know or may know, that I chair the Overview and Scrutiny Committee. The committee had advance access to this important report and we were publicly able to scrutinise it some weeks ago. We heard directly from the leader of the council, councillor Tracy Dixon, and from our chief executive, Jonathan Chu. They spoke to the detail of the report, which allowed us to have a constructive discussion about the past year, the projects that have improved the lives of our residents the most and the priorities that we need to take forward. Progress will be guided by our new vision and strategy, which we were all invited to shape back in twenty twenty two. We are clearly making some significant improvements to the lives of our residents. These range from the anti-poverty activities and supporting our residents hardest hit by the cost of living crisis to the breakthrough and sector-leading work we are carrying out as a council to respond to the climate emergency. We can evidence persistent efforts to regenerate and invigorate our town centres in order to make a real difference to our communities. As elected members, it is incumbent upon us all to deliver the very best for the residents we serve. This report demonstrates just some of the things that we have achieved in the last year alone. I'm privileged to be able to be a part of this. I'm especially encouraged to read the latter sections of the report, which not only demonstrate how this council is managing the many challenges currently facing us in a proactive and forward-thinking way in which we plan, adapt and flex to the significant demands forthcoming. Future challenges include rising levels and the greater complexity of demand, more difficult market conditions due to global factors, changing community expectations and rapidly developing technologies, all set against a backdrop of ever-decreasing government funding to help deliver only our core services. Each of our challenges are significant, but combined they make it so very difficult to navigate. Taking this into account, this council has articulated a very clear programme of transformation. This should be and is aptly named our council, with the very real intention to progress at pace. In addition to delivering major projects, our thinking continues to be strategic. We are analysing as to how we get better at preventing, reducing and delaying the need for services such as social care, homelessness and community safety while still delivering a fit-for-purpose provision. We continue to look at the value for money of our services. We ensure that we get maximum benefit and we need to ensure continually that we get maximum benefit and quality from every pound that we spend. Modernising how we deliver services and how we work is also really important. This includes how we use technology and how we foster the right culture to deliver first-class services. We must ensure that our staff and elected members are supported to deliver effectively. As is set out in the closing sections of the report, this council is committed to improving how we listen to residents and how we use insight and evidence to inform decisions about what we deliver. Our proud values are central to all of this. I'd like to thank councillor Huntley for bringing this report forward this evening. And I'd also like to thank all of our staff and partners who are the fabric of this council and work hard to ensure that plans are not only produced but brought to fruition. As Chair of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee, I look forward to the committee continuing to effect its role. The agenda will help deliver the next phase of the council's strategy and transformation programme under our very careful watch. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor? Councillor Francis, is your hand up as well, is it? No, fine.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you councillor Huntley for the support. There's lots of positives from it. I want to raise attention to hidden mission targets that you mentioned. Now, I've become aware that there's some issues with recycling in the borough, both at Middlefields and on binwagons. Now, I've contacted officers with my list of concerns, but can I request today that a full independent inquiry is conducted, please?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'll take some advice on that and get back to the councillor.
Councillor Francis?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd first of all like to say that I really welcome this annual report coming to Borough Council for the first time. And I think that's a real forward step in terms of being open and accountable. We've got the twenty year vision there. We've got the ambitions and the three year strategy, which all clearly state our aspirations for the borough and that gives clarity for us all and for the residents that we serve. But it also provides a level of accountability because we, you know, we can be held to account if we don't do what we say we'll do. I'd certainly echo the praise for staff and partners and there is lots to celebrate. But there's also, as has been said, there's things that we could be doing better. I welcome the focus on engagement and consultation. I think it's really important that we do things with and for the residents rather than doing things to them. I was particularly drawn, and forgive me, colleagues that might have heard me talk on this in the Overview and Scrutiny Committee, particularly drawn to one of our five ambitions, which is about being green and connected communities where people feel safe. And in terms of the clean part of that, anecdotally, talking to other residents in the borough and certainly things I've noticed myself when I travel around the country to other towns, other cities, other areas, sometimes I feel that they do a better job than maybe we do here in South Tyneside of keeping their public areas clean and tidy and free of litter. And so I just wonder if there's more we could be doing on that. I don't know whether that's a change of policy or additional resorts that's needed, but particularly for our town centre areas and some of our housing estates, I think we could be doing better at keeping those places clean. In terms of the green side of the picture, I think there's an urgent need to protect mature trees, to protect parks where children play and where people can access green spaces and of course, do whatever possible to protect our green belt. In terms of being connected with colleagues, I was at a recent councillor surgery and one resident was saying how he would love to use the metro to commute to and from work in Newcastle. But at the moment, or certainly at that time, the nexus figures on reliability was something like sixty percent of trains running on time, which means that, of course, for those of us who can do simple maths, forty percent of the time, they're not. And so, you know, in order to achieve our climate commitments, we need reliable public transport, particularly so that people can get from where they live to where they work or study or meet people and socialise. We need to challenge Nexus to do better on that. Sixty percent is not good enough and will only encourage private car use for those lucky to be in a position where they can afford to access that. For other people, they simply have to be late to work and face all of the consequences that might come along with that. So I think we need to do better at challenging Nexus. Finally, in terms of feeling safe, it's great that ninety seven percent of people say they feel safe in the borough. But of course, that means three percent don't. And three percent sounds like a small number, but that equates to thousands of people across the borough. And we've certainly heard talk in, you know, in the ward I represent, some residents describe certain areas as being no-go areas. And I know that the community engagement officers have been introduced. We've had sixty five thousand pound investment in a new CCTV control room. We've had funding from the Police and Crime Commissioner. But in terms of results and outcomes, we need to do better. People are still afraid to walk their dog through the park. Valuable community and leisure groups are being targeted and the police seem to struggle to manage the sheer volume of people being involved in some of that crime and disorder. And with that said, it's no wonder that some people don't feel safe. I welcome the work that's being done, but I think we need to do better to ensure that all residents feel safe in our streets, in our parks, in our town centre areas. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think this is the right time for it now, rather than the last one. Thank you for the report, councillor Huntley. It is an excellent report. I've read through it and obviously I've cross-referenced what I know and what I see. It is really good what yourself and Tracy Dixon have done because not forgetting the corruption and the mess that you came into. Yeah, and it's been against the odds what you have done over the last year, right? I've said it on camera before and I'll say it again, but the support I've got for Tracy Dixon, you know, there's a lot of Labour councillors that I get on with, a lot that I don't. But this year, what you have done in a year is really good. Yeah, people won't be happy with certain things. But you have done it against the odds with what you came into and what you're surrounded by with a split amongst yourselves. But on the page two hundred and forty, where we say, as a council, we employ four thousand seven hundred and ninety people, many of whom live in South Tyneside. We know that as an organisation, functions best when its employees feel supported and empowered and able to be their true selves at work. Sadly, we're having this meeting when this strike's on, which we're not allowed to talk about. And that's the only dump that's on this good report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you for the report, councillor Huntley. There's undoubtedly been some fantastic work highlighted in this report. It should be applauded. Thank you to everybody involved. I'd like to ask for one detailed response on one aspect of the report. And that's under the subtitle Connect the Jobs, where it mentions that twenty million in government funding has been received for South Shields, which will push forward the new South Shields Master Plan and supporting the college relocation. What it doesn't say, and it's information I've been chasing for a while, is what's the detail of that? It's twenty million, but there's more than one aspect of what's to be funded. What proportion is related to the South Tyneside College relocation? And what specifically is it to fund? I'd appreciate if I could get a response on that. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, I'll make sure the councillor gets a response to his question.
Councillor Carter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you councillor Huntley for bringing this report. As Lead Member for Education and Skills, I'm grateful in particular that this report shines a light on some of the important but sometimes unrecognised work we are doing as a local authority to make sure that local people of all ages are equipped with the skills and careers knowledge needed to make the most of existing and emerging job opportunities. We are fortunate in South Tyneside to have a one We are fortunate in South Tyneside to have a wonderful, a family of wonderful schools and other children's services that are ensuring our young people are well educated and supported as they grow into adults and join the workforce. The vast majority of our schools are rated outstanding or good by Ofsted, so we can be confident that our children and young people have a good springboard into the world of work. As the annual report shows, as a council, we are working hard and hand in hand with our schools and local businesses to improve in-school career support and make sure that young people are aware of the range of careers available locally. Major employers like Equino have, for example, over the last year, worked with us on new virtual work experience offers while our invention challenge is helping to get younger children interested early in future careers in renewable energy and green sectors. Our fantastic South Tyneside pledge is also contributing to this work. We have 240 businesses signed up now. As well as using more local suppliers, 57% of these businesses are taking on local people. 45% are providing work experience and 40% are taking part in school careers, events and other activities. The pledge is a fantastic example of policymaking done right and analysis undertaken by Northumbria University has estimated that it has generated around £3 million in benefits for the borough since it was launched. This is a clear example of how this Labour council is generating value for our residents despite the difficult fiscal context that we are working in. We also work closely with local employers through South Tyneside Works to raise awareness of opportunities and vacancies in certain sectors. From our Care Academy, which is upskilling local people to find work and progress in the care sector, to our work with hospitality businesses and efforts to grow the growth, sorry, efforts to support the growth of film and television, we are actively connecting people with a range of opportunities. We also continue to work closely with further education providers like South Tyneside College, who are of course relocating into South Tyneside Town Centre, which will help reinvigorate the town. We know that one of the most difficult questions to solve in the UK is the regional productivity gap. And improving residents' skills is a vital step in addressing this and to building on the already good work your Labour council has done in attracting quality jobs and private sector investment to the borough. We know that different people face different barriers to employment, not least health challenges, which are a big factor in high unemployment rates. So we are committed to engaging those furthest away from the labour market to better understand the barriers they face. Looking ahead, we are optimistic that soon we will have even more ways of positively to positively support skills and education locally. The expanded devolution deal for the North East will give regional partners greater control of skills, funding and powers, meaning we can better tailor skills development and training to the sectors and jobs that we know are and will be available locally. While this is a regional effort, South Tyneside is already playing a lead role in this area and it's exciting to think of the opportunities that lie ahead. There is a lot more work to do and many of these challenges will take time to overcome. But ultimately, we are making real progress in this area and I'm pleased to see the annual report, sorry, pleased to see the annual report recognising that excellent work. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Carter. Councillor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for the report. Obviously, as the lone Conservative here, I think there's been some justified criticisms, not all but some of the party I represent. However, I would just like to acknowledge £20 million from the Leveling Up Fund. I think it'd be reasonable to say £20 million towards the relocation of the college. And throughout the report, these excellent projects that have been taken on. Could they have all happened without funding from the government? And if you do have a figure, could you maybe give it to us? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you for a report councillor Huntley. I think it was a very good report of yourself and councillor Tracy Dixon. And especially one of the obstacles you've had putting you away off your own staff, the stabbing in the back you're getting off your own Labour councillors. Thank you.
I mean, no, I'm not even going to comment on that. Not to comment on that at all. Just to, the mayor is non-political, as you all know. But just, just a quick comment to my colleague councillor David Francis. It was very interesting what you were saying about, you know, the cleaning of the town and this kind of thing. And one of the things I'm doing as mayor, I'm going into lots of schools. And one of the subject matters I talk about is having a cleaner environment. And the children are so aware of how they need to improve and ameliorate that part of our borough. And as we all know, if you can get the children on board, you know, you've won. And I think, I think the cleaning is all about education. Well, that's a non-political comment. Okay then. Thanks very much for that report. When asked to consider the progress made, is this report agreed? Thank you very much. The next report is to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs summarising statutory officer designations. I will again ask councillor Bell as Lead Member for Governance, Finance and Corporate Services to move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Colleagues, this report is to ensure that all elected members are familiar with the designation of statutory responsibilities. I believe the report includes all the necessary detail and information to ensure members have a clear understanding of the designation of statutory responsibilities across council officers. And can I take this opportunity to thank councillor Robertson for bringing to our attention that there is a typographical error in paragraph 2.1, the Housing Act 2989, section four. It should be the Housing Act 1989, section four. And I would like council to note this, please. Mr Mayor, I would ask council therefore to note and agree the recommendations I set out in paragraph 10.1 A and B of the report. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Is that seconded? Councillor Cunningham, thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for the report. I've got serious concerns about the whole issue with the report because with the research that I do, what I've seen and watched and it's part of the inquiries that I've done that I believe has caused this report. Because there seems to be a lot of officer movement and titles and wages only going up, they're not going down, right? So in the report here, you know, bear in mind what I'm saying, there's people moved and got new titles and got 30,000 a year rises and what have you. So when we look here, it says at 1.3, there have been a number of recent member inquiries relating to the identity of a number of statutory officers and proper proper officers. Well, we know who the statutory officers are. It's the officers below that's been changing and the salaries changing. So at 2.1, it says, Full Council formally approved the appointment of Jonathan Chu as Chief Executive in May 2021. Full Council formally approved. I was at that meeting and I didn't approve. It shouldn't say Full Council approved. Right? I've checked the minutes and it doesn't have the vote there, right? To ensure that the council's functions, the Chief Executive's duty is to ensure that the council's functions are properly coordinated as well as organising staff and appointed appropriate management. What happened with the Ofsted report? Right? So the next bit is here, on the same report, councillor Bell. Further changes being made following recruitment exercises to the Director of Children's Services. And then when we go on to financial and resources, it says there are no financial implications arising from this report. The report comes from and after the Human Resources Committee meeting on the 19th of October, which clearly states the cost of these proposals would be £186,000. So one contradicts the other, that tonight's report says there's no financial implications. If you look at the minutes of the Human Resources Committee, 19th of October 21, it's saying £186,000. Now, these changes, as I said, have happened behind the scenes. What I'm thinking now with this report is that we're getting told after the horse is gone, right? So in the same papers, it says, appointments were made by the Senior Officer Appointments Committee on the 11th of November 2021 and reported to Full Council on the 13th of January 2022. There's the minutes from the 13th of January 2022 and they're not mentioned. And this is a lot of money that's been going on where officers are changing titles and getting big pay increases. It's saying it went to Full Council. There's the Full Council papers. It didn't come to Full Council. It's saying that there was no financial implications. The Human Resources Committee confirms £186,000. Thank you.
I don't know if you want to answer that, councillor Bell?
I'm not sure there was actually a question in amongst it all. There's no financial implications to this report because this report is only to note the actual titles and names of the designated officers. So there's no financial implications from this. It was just a produced report. The rest is all a demise in the domain of the HR committee. And we're not here to debate who gets what and who gets paid what. This is just a report actually naming the statutory officers. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Can I respond please, Mr Mayor?
No. Anybody else wish to ask questions? No. Councillors asked to note and agree the contents of this report and agree that the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs will make the administrative changes necessary to the council's constitution. Is that agreed? Thank you, colleagues. To consider a report of the Director of Children's Services on the Children's Service Improvement Journey update. And I'm going to ask councillor Adam Ellison as Lead Member for Children and Family Social Care to move the report. Councillor Ellison?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I hope members have had the opportunity to read the report, the detailed paper regarding the update of Children's Services Improvement Journey. The report itself is to provide the Borough Council with an update regarding the improvement journey of South Tyneside Council's Children's Services following the Ofsted inspection in December 2022 and the return visit in February 2023. And then the subsequent publication of the Ofsted report in May 2023. It goes without saying that the outcome of the inspection was deeply disappointing. While the inspection report was negative with an overall rating of inadequate, Ofsted did highlight several positives which are highlighted in the report. Paragraphs 2.2 A through to J. Some examples of passionate and committed staff, timely responses by services front door to missing children and their return form interviews. And the virtual school are relentless in pursuing education outcomes for the most children in our care. It's important to be aware that since the inspection outcome, our passionate and committed staff have been working tirelessly to improve services, all to ensure that what we do for our children is the best for children, young people and families in South Tyneside. As Lead Member, I want to highlight several parts of the report to give a measure of where we are on the improvement journey. Members, I stress the term journey as there are no quick fixes to what is required. Following the initial feedback from Ofsted in December 2022, immediate action was taken by the Chief Executive in consultation with the leader, myself as Lead Member. Members, you will note that paragraph 2.7, what these immediate actions were and the immediate assurances that were sought on the welfare and wellbeing of our children and people. Mr Mayor, I want to reassure members that with the rapid and detailed assurance-taking exercises that were undertaken, no children and young people who were placed in unregistered care placements experienced harm because of these placements. That's not to say that the fact that these children and people were in unregistered placements and there had been no escalation of the corporate leadership team, the political leadership of the council or the regulatory bodies was acceptable. Clearly, it was not. I'm aware that there have been questions asked about who's to blame for the inspection outcome. And I want to be clear that members are asked to be mindful that the council has responsibility to report in accordance with the Local Government Act of 1972 and cannot provide confidential and exempt information as defined in Part One of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972, i.e. information which is likely to reveal an identity of an individual. As I also point out, a cross-party group of members in this chamber were party to a process which looked into what happened and therefore members are already cited on the outcome of this. The level of scrutiny that is applied to the improvement journey is significant and this can be seen in paragraphs 2.12 through 2.21. Crucially, this refers to both internal and external scrutiny of the improvement and that involves a vast array of partners across a multi-agency landscape. I would also like to highlight to members that there is a national care crisis, particularly in relation to the sufficiency of care placements for children and young people. As stated in paragraph 3.8, there is a risk that because of a demand and a unique need for some of our children and people, where alternative care is required, no suitable placements may be available locally, regionally or nationally. I would stress that this is not a South Tyneside issue and this is being experienced across the United Kingdom. If we were in a position in the future where unregistered placements was the only option available because of immediate need to provide alternative care for children or a young person, communication of any actions the council may need to take to be provided as a result would be proactively communicated transparently to the Chief Executive, Lead Member and regulatory authorities, including Ofsted. The report also explains the main issues that Ofsted identified and gives detailed narrative about the activity related in the improvement of each of these areas and that's highlighted in 3.3 to 3.26. Specifically, the members will note that the significant capital investment of South Tyneside Council is made for the provision of in-house residential facilities, which many ward members have been consulted on throughout the borough. As can be seen in 3.20 through A through to F, this will improve our provision for South Tyneside children and young people. We've looked at recruitment and retention issues which led to an uplift of remuneration for some of the most hard-to-recruit posts in service costing around £400,000. We are significantly enhancing our performance and quality management with a refreshed audit tool, improved performance measures and ensuring that we have a well-defined learning loop of what data and quality assurance processes are telling us. During council in October 2023, comments were made that this council ruins families' lives on a weekly basis when the slight thing happens in a marriage with children being taken away and people taken to court. This is not acceptable and I refer to paragraph 3.27 of the report, which clearly explains that children's services do not have the legal authority to remove children without a legal mandate from a court of law. As such, any decision is directed by a court. Children and their parents' rights are safeguarded in law and any recommendation to the court of law by children's services to remove a child from their immediate family comes after exhausting every alternative option or where the level of risk denotes that it's not safe for the child to remain where they are. For it to be instituted that our services, insinuated that our services ruins families is wholly unacceptable. Members, I think it's important for us to focus on what we're doing to improve children's services and what the report highlights is that there is a significant activity taking place to achieve this. I'd like to take this opportunity to again recognise the dedication and commitment of our staff who continue to work exceptionally hard to improve. Sections 3.34 and Section 3.35 of the report give us clear indication from the DFE, Ofsted, that we are highly, we are on the right track to improve children's services in South Tyneside. We are not complacent, however, and fully aware of the scale of the challenges facing our services. And the complexity of need in the borough continues to arise. We will continue to engage meaningfully in both internal and external scrutiny to ensure that we continue to strive on this journey. Finally, members, you'll note the feedback from Ofsted regarding the initial monitoring visit which took place in November 2023. It is not a published outcome. However, in the interest of transparency, we'll publish the outcome at the end of this month. We'll also endeavour to bring periodic updates to the progress of improvement of various committees and forums related to the strands associated with the improvement work. Mr Mayor, move the report. Thank you.
Seconded, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thanks councillor Ellison for that report. I just wanted to draw your attention to point 216 onward where you've mentioned the establishment of an improvement board that you've just touched on there. And I see there, point 22, that you've stayed with continuous independent input from colleagues. So we have plenty of input, but the only output I see is the DFE will undertake reviews of progress. Do we plan to share that progress in report format to elected members?
Mr Mayor, yes, we'll continue to update through the various different scrutiny processes that we have. The DFE is just the element of that. So Ofsted is the formal regulatory body for children's services. And from this inspection onwards, they'll continue to publish their reports as we go through. So all of that information will be shared publicly and it'll be available. And when we do reports like this, we'll include information from other partners like DFE, Local Government Association and other SLIP partners as well.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for the report, councillor Ellison. We had our discussions at the last meeting about it and, you know, loud and clear, I don't envy the way that you've got with that department and what you came into when you took it on. I really don't. department and what you came into when you took it on. I really don't, Adam, right? Now, I've done my work on the Ofsted report, which is, which was so upsetting in my remarks at the last meeting, you know, uh, but following on from that, I've done a, a lot of work on it and I've, I've followed as much as I can with the Ofsted. Now, I've got a copy, and this is not, this is not aimed at you, Adam, in any shape or form. Ideally, it'll assist, right? The council's, uh, improvement plan, i.e. action plan, right? You know, everyone might know, but they get the rag rating, which is the red, amber, green. And I'm not inserting your intelligence, Adam. I'm just saying it for those that don't know. Now, this, this year, I've got a copy of Havering Council London and this is their Ofsted action plan, if you like. Now, within, within our action plan, not to dig at you, Adam, I'm going to repeat that loud and clear, please, you know. So out of our action plan, ten of them are still red and it's like seven, eight months since Ofsted published the report, right? And there's only one green out of twenty eight points. So again, you know, the workload that you've got and the responsibility of the position. And again, cross referencing with this with our councils. On, on our report, there's no, uh, responsible lead officer. Right now, it may be the new person that's been appointed and maybe someone below, but we need to see who these people are because there is twenty eight points identified on all the pages of the, the action plan. Uh, so if we can get that, and as I say, I can only see one green out of the twenty eight so far. All of the rest may be ready to come to green. I don't know. But the final comment I would say is, is there some kind of commitment you can give that each full council can get some form of update? Even a copy of the improvement plan as it goes greener and greener, if you don't mind, please.
And I've heard the, the comments around officer information. So obviously that'll be the Director of Children's Services and other partners within that improvement board relationship. And in terms of the, the other information that you've said about the improvement board, um, I've noted that as well. And we'll obviously continue to provide updates as and when we can possibly do that. So it mightn't be every council meeting, but it'll certainly be as often as we can through various different forms and mediums.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and thank you for the report. Councillor Ellison, when we raised this motion last year, I asked you why two of the most senior children's services officers had resigned. It isn't clear in the report why this has happened or how we got this mess, how we got in this mess in the first place. You mentioned an improvement journey. An improvement journey has a start and a reason for that journey in the first place. Are you seeing in the report that the officers resigned because of failures on your watch? I can't see it mentioned that officers haven't, I can see, I can see it mentioned that officers haven't bothered to record decisions, but there wasn't a record. So logically, can we assume the blame was directed at them? The two seniors officers who resigned, are they carrying the can for this council's failures? If so, councillor, councillor Ellison, can you confirm if these officers were forced out? Or did they receive full pay and good records?
Yeah, councillor Brennan, councillor Brennan. I said at the beginning, you know, and I'll read it out again if you, you wish me to, you know. You can't come to this meeting and speak and accuse anybody of an involvement or use offensive expressions in talking about person, personalities. Um, I'm not going to tolerate that. If you want to continue with your, your, you know, a, a reasonable question, I'll allow that. But I'm certainly not allowing personal attacks or the identification of people who have left for whatever reason have left the council. So continue. But I bear that in mind what I've just said yet.
Mister Mayor hadn't mentioned any names. I've just mentioned senior officers.
Yes, yes. Continue.
Councillor Ellison, you're openly responsible for the service, are you not? Being the highest elected official, and I have previously stated the book stops with you. Councillor Ellison, I need to ask, did you know what was going on? Are we seeing, are we seeing these officers fooled you into thinking everything was all right? How much oversight did you actually have in the, in your trusted position? Was it some? Was it none? Was this a total surprise only brought your attention by the Ofsted, Ofsted inspection? I think what is an absolute scandal here is it's taken a monumental push from independent councillors to get to the bottom of the truth and some good work by Ofsted. But so far, other than the smoke and mirrors you're hiding behind, you're still unable to answer the basic questions around responsibility. Who was responsible, councillor Ellison? Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Mister Mayor, as I said in, in the remarks that I gave, I'm not prepared to discuss any personal information. However, I would just point out that it was a cross party group involved in investigation immediately after Ofsted, including your own group leader. Um, so you will be aware of the facts. I know you are. Um, I would just say that, that there is a significant amount of work to be done within children's services. We're on a journey. It will take time for, for us to, for things to come to fruition. And as lead member and their lead in that service alongside the director, they do as best we can for the children and young people of the borough.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and thank you, councillor Ellison, for the report. First thing I wanted to mention was this report today is, is the result of an opposition motion. Only the date of the report presented was changed with a, a Labour amendment. I mention this because other than the brief mention in this report of the fact the then Director of Children's Services and Head of Service for Children and Families decided to leave this council. Other than that, this report shows no detail of any responsibility taken at all. Nothing. Nobody's taking any responsibility for an overall effectiveness rating dropping from good to inadequate. Nobody, no mention, nothing. And I'll outline those statutory responsibilities for the lead member for children's services. This is from the D F E Government, Government Statutory, Statutory Guidance in relation to the lead member. Section nineteen of the Children's Act two thousand and four requires every top tier local authority to designate one of its members as lead member for children's services. This lead member for children's services has full delegated responsibility from the council through the leader for children's services. This responsibility, this political responsibility for the leadership, strategy and effectiveness of local authority children's services is also something that you're accountable for. Simply, does the lead member, this is the question, does the lead member for children's services accept he has this level of responsibility and accountability? And if so, will he today be apologising for what happened? Because today, as I said, there is no accountability, no responsibility at all from anybody in relation to what's happened and attaining that level of inadequate. And for me, I'm sorry to say that that lack of responsibility and a lack of accountability is another inadequate. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I, I don't need a lesson from councillor Thompson on what the lead member's role is. I've been doing it for two and a half years and I know what that responsibility is and, and how much influence that has over the services that I do lead alongside the director. And I also know how important it is to get the job right. Um, talking about accountability, since the, the outcome of the Ofsted inspection, I and the interim director and the current director have been in various different forums to make sure that our members of this chamber know what's happened within children's services and updated. Um, I, I know that I'm accountable for the service as is the director and that's exactly what we're doing by going in front of scrutiny committees and answering questions and giving updates where we can and where it's appropriate.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I'd like to pick up on three aspects of the report if I can. Um, the first one is, uh, mentioned in, uh, section three point one C where it talks about unregistered placements and explains that this is where a child has been provided with some form of care and is living somewhere that's not registered with Ofsted. And it goes on to say this is illegal. And of course, um, the couple of sections later, three point four tells us there were a total of fifteen children and young people who were cared for in unregistered provision between April twenty twenty two and December twenty twenty two. Now, I understand that, um, the reasons for that is because demand outstripped capacity and that isn't just an issue that we faced in South Tyneside. That was a sex, sector-wide issue. Um, and I know that we've heard already partly in the annual report that there is additional capacity being created and investment in additional placements, which is obviously welcomed. Um, and of course, it mentions in the report that, uh, there are no children and young people in South Tyneside in unregistered care at this time. Um, but my question would be, first question is, what's in place to monitor capacity versus demand going forward to avoid us being in that same situation again? Secondly, a few local residents have been in touch with me following, um, you know, regarding the children's services report tonight. And of course, I'm not intending to go into any cases with specific individuals because of confidentiality, but there are some wider issues that I think are worth raising. Uh, section three point two five of the report mentions the timeliness and quality of direct work with children, including life story work. And I've heard concerns raised around record keeping and around communication with families and carers. Um, minutes of meetings, for example, being shared in a timely fashion and, um, you know, timely updating of case management systems along with handovers between, um, allocation of cases with members of staff. Children are sometimes having to retell stories multiple times as staff change and that's often distressing and traumatic, uh, for the children, young people and of course their, their families and carers. I'm keen to get assurances that these issues are being addressed to avoid adding to the distress of children, young people already dealing with hugely stressful situations. And then finally, um, section three point one zero, uh, talks about kinship carers. And as one local resident told me, the biggest issue for kinship carers at the moment is financial support. And they're certainly hoping for kinship carers to be eligible for the same sort of allowance as foster carers receive regardless of their current financial status. I was told, and I, I have no way of checking this, but I was told that if all of the kinship care placements, for example, in Jarro constituency failed, it could cost the council an estimated nineteen million pounds annually and result in worse outcomes for the children and families, the cost of which would be immeasurable. I gather that thanks to the kinship care charity, there's a four-year trial of financial allowances which is going to be carried out in up to eight local authorities backed by sixteen million pounds of investment for the first year. So hopefully that lack of financial support is something that could be rectified at some point in the future. I've also heard some concerns over the timeliness or absence of follow-up visits to kinship carers once court awards are given. The annual review after the placement is crucial for many, not just in terms of the financial support, but also the practical support that should be available. And especially for those kinship carers who might also have work commitments during the day. And so the question on this one would be, what measures are in place to assure that those follow-up visits are conducted in a timely fashion? And what support is available for kinship carers who have work commitments during the day? Um, obviously there are something, you know, there's support and peer support available during the working day, but for those people who have work responsibilities, what support is available for them?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, thank you councillor Francis for the questions. Um, in relation to kinship care, that's something that I've got a particular interest in and have worked with officers around the improvement system of the package that we have, have just instituted the latter part of last year. Um, but of, of course, I'll pick up the points individually with, with yourself and write to you around the, those points. Um, in terms of record keeping, um, I think it'd be really helpful if you had a discussion directly with uh, maybe the head of children, family, social care, just around some of the work that's been done because it was an issue that was raised, um, by Ofsted around record keeping and timeliness of, and recording of minutes and things. So, uh, I think it'd be really helpful just to have that conversation and give yourself assurance on, on some of those steps that have been taken. And in relation to unregistered placements, there is, um, various different now boards and scrutiny that take place within the service to continuously monitor where cases are. Um, whether there is an issue that might lead to a breakdown of relationship, that sort of thing. Um, so that is being continuously monitored, um, but, but acknowledge the, the point that, and the concern that it has. And in the event that we do ever have to have, um, an unregistered placement for a child, the appropriate steps will be followed. So that would be the appropriate notifications that includes Ofsted as well, which, which hadn't been done at that point in time.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, and thank you councillor Ellison. I don't think there's any member or member of the public listening to yourself will appreciate how much and how much hard work you're putting in to rectify what is a pretty sad situation. However, at the last meeting, and I did touch upon the same subject as other, um, councillors in here tonight. And it's just a very simple question I've got to ask you, which will only require a yes or no answer. In your senior role, is there anything that you feel you owe an apology to the people of South Tyneside? Thank you.
I think, Mister Mayor, I've, I've talked at length around where we've been at, what we've done, how we've improved. I think we, we acknowledge that things weren't right at that point of inspection. Um, a, and we have done everything that we can to make improvements for children and people and families in South Tyneside. And I think that's really important. I think it's really important that we acknowledge that there's been a significant amount of work to get us to a point where Ofsted are acknowledging that the seeds for improvement are there.
Yeah, councillors asked to, uh, note the report. Is the report noted? Thank you, colleagues. Next items to consider, questions under procedure rule eight. No questions have been received. Item twelve to consider, any petitions received under council procedure rule nine. None have been received. The next item of business in accordance with council procedure rule ten is to consider the, the following notice of motion. Um, there are two motions to be considered in a rule ten today. So we've progressed to motion one, which has been submitted by councillors Thompson, Foster, Brennan, Kennedy, Milburn, Roberts and Robertson. Councillor Thompson, please present your motion.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. There's very little I can say on this that isn't already in the motion wording. Simply a third of this council's elected members, simply a third of this council's elected members are not Labour. Yet key committees. Sorry, did I say something wrong there? Simply a third of this council's elected members are not Labour. Yet key committees, boards, panels, arms length, arms length, I can never say their bodies and outside bodies do not reflect this politically. We've seen this recently with representing, representation on the corporate parenting, parenting committee. And there are others such as South Tyneside Homes and the Multi-Agency Community Safety Partnership. Simply the ask today is that this motion to update the constitution to show detail of all committees, boards, panels, arms length, bodies and outside bodies that are appointed in accordance with political balance. And if not, show the deep, the rationale for those committees, boards, panels, arms length, bodies and outside bodies not being appointed in accordance with the political balance. That was difficult to say. I hope members can support that this be referred to Constitution Committee for consideration. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor, would you like to, uh?
I'll second the motion, Mister Mayor, and reserve the right to speak later.
Okay. Are there any other members wish to speak to this report? Sorry, speak to this motion. Councillor Brennan?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I think the motion for proportionate balance on outside bodies is an obvious one. The reason should be a plain and simple why we're asking for it. As councillor Thompson's already mentioned, the council consists of one third of opposition members. Outside bodies should reflect the council's makeup. After all, next year, we don't know how many councillors on the other side of the benches will be here. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Yeah, it was really, all I have to say is, um, it seems appropriate to me that the appointments to committees, whether they're internal committees or, or representational outside bodies should at least broadly reflect the makeup of the council. And, um, you know, as has been said, if, if around a third of the councillors are opposition councillors, it seems only reasonable that that's reflected in appointments to various committees and panels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, the political balance, I mean, what we've just seen with the Ofsted, um, we've got the corporate parent committee, which is not politically balanced. You know, I, I know there's two or three other committees that's not politically balanced and they're not open to the public. So the other, the opposition councillors are not, uh, even finding out what goes on behind them closed doors, which is wrong. There shouldn't be any committee in a council with this amount of opposition. There shouldn't be any committee in a council with this amount of opposition councillors. There shouldn't be any committee that hasn't got political balance in the interest of transparency and our proud values. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I get the impression that, you know, some of the independent opposition councillors have come of age tonight. I seem to recall in debates gone by where they've done nothing but ridicule. They've done nothing but condemn. They've done nothing but criticize the Constitutional Committee. I think it was councillor Robertson that said the Labour Party, the Labour Group normally sends it into the committee of the long grass. I think it was someone else that turned on and said, that's the committee where they absorb everything and they hide and protect certain things as well. Am I hearing now that they've recognized the other system for development as far as the process is concerned? And is it okay now for it to go to the Constitutional Committee?
Councillor Kennedy, do you want to speak now? Close the, close the.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I reserved the right just to see what comments or possible comments members of the Labour Group had. It's a straightforward motion. It really is. And with the greatest respect, I'll speak as I find, you know, I totally disagree with your comments about committees. You know, it's what we're looking for is a fair representation on all the committees to hopefully help this council work better. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just hope everyone supports it. Thank you.
Councillor Thompson is the proposer, you have the right to.
Yeah, I'm still trying to figure out the tone of that comment from councillor. Kind of figure it out. But but as councillor, councillor Forster, Forster mentioned, it's a straightforward, simple ask. And I hope members can support us on this today. Thank you.
Okay, is the motion agreed? The motion is agreed. Thank you. Motion two has been submitted by councillors Francis, Ford, Herbert, Milne, McKeon and Guy. Councillor Francis, please present your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start with what I hope is common ground and some things that everyone present could agree on. First of all, the civilian suffering we've seen in Gaza and Israel has shocked the world. An average of two hundred civilians are being killed every day. And towards the end of last year, estimate that of one child every ten minutes. The humanitarian situation is clearly intolerable and must end. Civilians must be protected, whoever they are, wherever they are, and whatever their background or heritage. Blockades for food, water, fuel and humanitarian aid and the forced displacement of people are wholly unacceptable and must end. Collective punishment must end. All parties must adhere to international humanitarian law. Just to give a little bit of context, I tried to bring this or a motion of this kind to council in November, but sadly the the cap on motions had already been reached. So I submitted a question to the leader. And as it records in the minutes, the leader at that meeting said that, given the situation was fast moving, it would be appropriate to have a better understanding of the developments over the next few weeks, after which he'd be able to respond in more detail. And obviously, those few weeks have now elapsed. We've just passed a hundred days into the, into the escalations since the seventh of October attacks. And the conflict is now beginning to spread more widely through that region. And there's a risk of that conflict becoming more international. As the leader acknowledged, this has been fast moving. Even since the motion was written and submitted at the start of this month, the figures have changed drastically. When I submitted this motion, it was reported that eighteen thousand Palestinians had been killed since October the seventh and forty nine thousand five hundred injured. In just a short few weeks, this has now risen to twenty four thousand killed and almost sixty one thousand injured. And these, of course, aren't just numbers. These are people. These are families. These are husbands and wives, mothers and fathers. Perhaps most distressingly, over half of these deaths and injuries are thought to be children. This is not just something that we read about in the newspapers or see on TV screens and social media. This has a direct impact on residents in our communities. Towards the end of last year, I spoke to a woman in the marketplace in South Shields, a woman with close family members in Gaza. And she told me her heartbreaking story of waiting day after day in hope of a simple two word text message saying, still alive. And I'd invite everyone listening to this to pause for a moment and imagine somebody that you care deeply about living through this, and you're the one waiting for that message. Put yourself in her shoes and imagine what that must be like. There are clear calls from the international community for an immediate ceasefire. In the United Nations in early December, the United States was the only country to vote against this. The UK shamefully, in my opinion, abstained. The EU voted overwhelmingly for an immediate humanitarian ceasefire. And more recently, South Africa has accused Israel of genocide in the International Court of Justice. In years to come, I suspect history will not judge kindly those who had a platform to challenge this and failed to fully take advantage of it. I'd urge all colleagues present this evening to vote for the motion, to lobby our government and to call for an immediate stop to the killing. A release of all hostages, blockades to be lifted and humanitarian aid allowed in and calls for an immediate ceasefire. Thank you.
Okay, this is not a long one because although this situation is a very complex one on a humanitarian level, it is very simple. What is needed and has been needed for a long time, as we know, is a meaningful political process. This crisis won't be resolved without one, no matter how long the fighting goes on for. In order for one side to gain a perceived advantage, how many more innocent children and their families must die? What is happening is against international law. More and more countries globally, as has been said, are speaking up against this war. Charities on the ground are telling us that so called humanitarian pauses are not enough. The infrastructure is too damaged. In many places, the roads aren't even functional, so a few days' worth of aid can't be distributed. Time and effort is needed to restore the infrastructure. What is needed, as has just been said, is an immediate ceasefire and a meaningful political process. Supporting the continuation of this conflict or indeed saying nothing does risk placing us on the wrong side of history. So I hope that we can agree upon this tonight and call for an immediate ceasefire. Thank you.
Okay. The motion's now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to speak? Question or move an amendment? Councillor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think before I move on to the actual motion itself, and obviously we've put tabled some proposed amendments tonight that have gone around. I think it is worthwhile sort of noting that there are conflicts wider across the world. There isn't just Gaza and Israel. Very prominent in all of our minds is still the ongoing conflict in Ukraine with Russia still continuing the attacks on the Ukrainian people and the innocent victims who are dying in Ukraine. And we can't also forget, and it's been touched on there by opposition councillors in terms of the wider Middle East and the escalations and hostilities over there, notably in the Yemen area. And I think it's also worthwhile mentioning, obviously, the issues within the Yemen area have been going on for a lot longer, particularly because of the Saudi Arabian attacks against the Houthi regime in the Yemen. At the heart of all these wars and conflicts are always the innocent civilians, the men, the women, the children, all victims of wars, not of their own making, usually led by some kind of ideology, religion or other forms of belief that frankly aren't necessarily theirs. If I can now move on to the amendments to the, to the motion, I think essentially we can't disagree with the motion. It's essentially that we, we need to sort of make a move towards supporting some sustained ceasefire in the Middle East and in Gaza. The amendments reflect the changing national and international tone since that dreadful attack by Hamas on Israel on seventh of October. As has already been mentioned, the UN and the EU are urging a sustained cessation of hostilities or a ceasefire. And nationally, speaking politically from a Labour Party point of view, we've already had the shadow foreign secretary, David Lammy, standing in Parliament on the eighth of January, that there's a need for a sustained ceasefire is clear. Whilst also recognizing Israel's devastating use of force and the continued holding of Israeli hostages by Hamas, reiterating this message on his social media in the last week or so. It's for this reason that we've put forward the various amendments. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to go through each one of the amendments because the amendments have been circulated, the highlighted in red font in those amendments on there. And I hope that this chamber can come together tonight to support these amendments because it's in the same spirit as the motion has put forward by the Green Group. And I think we need to all come together on this because it is very much a non-political and across-chamber point of view. Mr. Mayor, move the amendments.
Thank you for that. Just as a matter of importance on the matter you've just raised about coordination and working together cohesively. Thank you, Councillor Robertson, for withdrawing your amendment. Should be acknowledged, and it is by myself. Thank you. Okay, is the amendment seconded?
Second.
Pardon?
Seconded.
Right. Okay. Does anybody wish to speak? Ask questions on the amendment? Councillor Forster first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I say, as the lone conservative in here, you cannot disagree with the spirit of the motion, the original motion. However, I think the amendment adds to it. I think the wise words. I think it includes both sides fairly to terrible sad situation. Hamas though are a terrorist organization. Terrorists don't stop until they reach their goal. And I feel this amendment just hits the right chord and the right balance. And I fully support the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Without doubt, this original motion and now the amendment has taken an awful lot of thinking about for me. I understand why it was tabled. Completely agree with the majority of the original content of the motion. After a lot of thought on the original motion, I decided my position would be to abstain. I know we're talking about the amendment now. I don't like it when people abstain and don't add something to explain their position. So on that basis, I'll briefly explain my position on the original motion. Ultimately, for me, it was the resolution to support international efforts for an immediate humanitarian ceasefire that concerned me the most. Of course, we all want an immediate ceasefire. But the situation, as previously mentioned, is hugely complex. And to make a judgment call on an immediate ceasefire without the level of intelligence data that I'm sure government has, isn't just difficult for me. I found it impossible. Just this, in the last few days, Hamas fired fifty rockets at Israel. Which if they had got through that, that dome would have been untold civilian casualties. Hamas still holds over a hundred and thirty hostages in Gaza. Stories of Hamas stealing aid are rife. And ultimately, Hamas haven't changed their position from wanting to completely eradicate Israel. It's a complete nightmare. And I don't think wanting a particular outcome, which is the immediate ceasefire, an outcome I think we all want. But I don't think for me, it didn't qualify me in this situation to say what the best path to realize that outcome would be. So ultimately, I would have abstained from the original motion. But in the brief time we've had to look at the amendment, I'm like councillor Forster. It's the section which states the UN Security Council's motion passed on the twenty second of December is a clear call by the international community to create the conditions for a sustainable cessation of hostilities, which gets it over the line for me. And on that basis, I fully support the amendment tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Francis, I'm going to, I'm just following the rules here. Does anybody, other members wish to speak? Ask questions? Councillor Clare?
Chair, other than the point that I would wholeheartedly support the amended resolution, obviously, I think it would be extremely difficult based upon the fact that, you know, Israel is dealing with terrorist organizations. This isn't a war between the Palestinians and the Israelis. I think it's a war between the Israelis and the terrorist organizations. And as long as some of the infrastructure remains in place, I think it would be extremely difficult to call an immediate ceasefire. I think it would be relevant to call a sustainable ceasefire. And sadly, as in all wars, there will be casualties and those casualties will continue to increase. But I do believe as long as the infrastructure there is for terrorists. I think we need to reflect, and I know time has gone on since October the seventh, but I think we need to reflect just a little bit on how the conflict began. And that began, you know, when Hamas, who was a terrorist organization, you know, entered Israel. The raped, raped women, the mutilated babies, the beheaded babies. They took hostages, but indiscriminately fired shots at the elderly. There was over one thousand two hundred people killed on that horrible day. And I think, you know, we need to just pause for a moment and consider the sustained ceasefire rather than the immediate ceasefire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I can't believe what I'm hearing. I really cannot, honestly. What kind of human being wouldn't just turn around and say, there should be a ceasefire? Who can, who can say anything other than a ceasefire? Have a word with yourselves? Man alive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just going off what the councillor says, I hold similar views basically. To have an immediate ceasefire now, it's been tried for many, many years. And time and time again, the other side's just rearmed and started the cycle of violence again and again. I don't think I can support the original motion, but the amended motion is, I can support that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks, I'd like to thank all members present actually for their, for their comments tonight. And certainly take the point councillor Walsh made about the wider conflict in, conflicts in Yemen, for example, and the Ukraine. And, you know, as you know, because we've, we've spoken about this, I accept almost all of the changes there as strengthening and improving the motion. And I would like to extend a note of thanks for the dialogue that we've had around that, which has been constructive. I'm afraid that the bit that sticks for me is I still don't understand what's so controversial about an immediate ceasefire. You know, the original motion's calling for an immediate release of hostages, for example. And so it therefore makes logical sense to me, this is a thing that works both ways. And a ceasefire is not asking one side to ceasefire and not the other. It's a ceasefire, it's a cease in hostilities across both sides. It works both ways. And just to pick up on councillor Clare's comments, Israel has not moved from its original position since October the seventh. In fact, the language and the rhetoric coming from senior figures in Israel has actually become even more objectionable in my eyes and even more horrific. Demonizing and dehumanizing people. Yes, a longer term political solution is needed. But innocent civilians shouldn't be paying the ultimate price for the failures of their leaders and politicians, those supposedly responsible for representing their interests. Anyone who's ever been on a first aid course knows that the first thing you do is you look for danger. Before you check for people's response, before you check the airways and all that stuff, the first thing you do is check for danger and make sure that people are safe. They're safe from immediate harm before you do anything else. And of course, in that situation, you'd hope that any casualty in a first aid incident has a sustainable, good health going forward. But you need to take care of their immediate danger before you worry about that. And the long term health means little to somebody who's at immediate risk, whose life's at immediate risk. The longer this all takes, the more innocent people die. And again, I stress more than half of these are thought to be children being killed and injured. I made reference earlier to South Africa accusing Israel of genocide in the International Court of Justice. And that's a legal challenge that will take years. We know that, you know, twenty four thousand people have died since the seventh of October. How many more innocent people will be killed if we wait for a resolution? This situation calls for humanity over politics, over judicial challenges. The only way to protect civilians The only way to protect civilians is for the fighting to stop. People in Gaza and Israel don't need a humanitarian pause or to work towards a sustainable solution. They need a ceasefire. In the few short weeks since the motion was originally submitted, six thousand more people have been killed. Each one of them is somebody's son or daughter or family member. And put yourself back in the shoes of the woman I mentioned, who I spoke to last year. To reassure her and protect innocent civilian lives, we need a ceasefire now and then to work on the longer-term solution.
Okay, members, is the amendment agreed? The amendment is curried, therefore the motion is amended, takes the place of the original motion. And that's the substantive motion which you've just moved. Okay. I believe that we have come to the end of business. So. I don't think it's a half of them. Nobody's indicated to me that you needed to talk anything more or move a question or, you know. So that's sorted. The motion's agreed. The amendment motion's agreed. Is the motion as amended agreed? I think we've already said that. Anyway. Colleagues, that concludes the business of today. I'd like to thank everybody in the Public Gallery for your attendance and all those watching from home this evening. Safe on my journey. Good night and God bless.